Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome you to the Administration Bill. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws, 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised by the Asperk Press. Issue August 1st, 2015, all municipal clerks of the townships and the boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified in the requirements of the posting of the notices that have been made. Minutes, approval, Mr. Boyce?
Motion.
Second. For the minutes?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Boyce, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, communications on file, Board Office reports. Okay, next is the Superintendent's Report.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, before we get started in a few moments with Mr. Boyce's budget presentation, we wanted to recognize the six students who were honored across the district for what's known as the Caring Award. And I think last year, we recognized our six individual winners, and I'll get to the descriptor a bit of the award, in one of our larger student recognition ceremonies. And we really felt that the work that the students do for their community and the videos that they create, which I'll talk about in a moment, really sort of warranted its own evening to call those six individuals to the Board Office and sort of single them out a little bit. So, what the Caring Award is, is the Monmouth County Guidance Supervisors Association selects one senior from each high school in Monmouth County who has made significant contributions to their community. And I think that in this day and age where sometimes we're a little bit testing crazed and sometimes we're a little bit worried about the academic needle, we forget that sort of the most important thing that our kids can do are to be really, really good community members, really solid citizens, contributors, folks who come into a community and by their presence and their deeds and their actions and their words make it better. And so, we're gonna highlight each of these six individuals. What I'm gonna do is embarrass you a little bit, call you up one at a time. We'll show your video, and then I think we have a medal for everyone, a district medal, and we'll do a photo op where I get to smile next to you. So, we're gonna start with Colts Neck High School and Ally Banker. And we're gonna, the videos are gonna be here, so we'll play Ally's video first.
We meet Tuesday, Thursday. Ally Banker is a senior Colts Neck High School. I would like to thank the guidance department and Mrs. Kozni for nominating me for the Monmouth County Care Award. This is such an honor. I'm involved in many things in Colts Neck High School. I'm a member of DECA, I'm in Pew membership, I participate in the never-ending conference every year, and I'm the head mentor of the group connection. I am most proud of my involvement in group connection. This is because this club means so much to me. We meet on Tuesdays, Thursdays. This is a time to hang out with special needs population at our school. The new, at the Tuesday and Thursday, special needs kids is we meet up after school for two hours. We hang out, we talk, we play board games, we'll go watch a school event, we'll go outside when it's night's out. And this is just a time for the special needs kids to mingle with the peer mentors. They have the new group connection at the end of the year, though we have our township. And this is such the cutest thing ever. They are so happy to go onstage and dance and sing and have spotlight right on them. And it just makes me so happy that they're having a great time. Please, the involvement in group connection has opened my eyes to a whole new field. When I go to college tomorrow, I will, I'll be catering a minor degree in special education to continue working with special needs kids for my whole entire life. My lifelong dream is to make as many kids as happy as they can be. I would like to thank Mrs. Kozni once again and Colts Neck High School Department for nominating me for 2016 Care Award. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Natalie Melzer from Field Borough.
Hi, my name is Natalie Melzer. I'm Field Borough 2016 recipient of the Care Award. I would like to thank my guidance counselor, Mrs. Patterson, for nominating me for the award and for being the best guidance counselor in the past four years. Mrs. Patterson nominated me for the award because I started a program called Mission Nutrition. Mission Nutrition is a type program where my volunteers and I go to different groups of kids of all ages to teach them how to make a New Jersey meal. All of the food that the groups made was donated to our local supervision in Greenhold. My mission nutrition program took place within a variety of groups, ranging from programs in middle schools before and after school to Girl Scouts and religious programs. I would even allow into the food science classes and culinary classes at my high school to take over the classroom for the entire day, making a different aspect of the meal within each period throughout the day. All of the foods was donated to the soup kitchen in St. Peter's. I have always had a huge interest in community service. I've been a Girl Scout for 13 years, making it easy for me to be constantly exposed to several different service projects over the years, including earning my bronze award, silver award, and gold award. All of the food for Mission Nutrition was donated to St. Peter's Soup Kitchen in downtown Greenhold. This soup kitchen was run by the incredible Jim Benedict, who has so much help during the entire process. Doing this program has been amazing experience and has really helped shape my future in nutrition. As I will be attending John Kerry, who I'm soon to see next fall for Culinary Nutrition.
To Natalie, I have three young Girl Scouts at home, which leads to nutrition issues for me with the cookies. For Field Borough Township, we have video for Jake Kents.
After Monmouth delivered an entire self-defense world of resources to our people protest, I don't believe it possible. After Nelson Mandela's 27 years of his life, not only a gemstone for demanding equality to the present and in our generation, I don't believe it possible. And after observing it all, as analyzing such myself, taking nine steps to solve our world's problems, I don't believe it possible. My name is Jake Kents, ninth senior at Field Borough Township High School. Thus far, I've been very involved in my school. Some clubs and organizations I've been a part of consist of Student Supplement in Darius, Leadership Ward Look, Lead for Diversity, Student Guard Safety Program, Challenger's Sports and Peaceful Violence, Drum, and Spirit of Government. As for sports, I'm a pre-sport R.C.I., being the captain of my soccer team and being part of both the winter and spring track team. One organization stands out particularly, and that is Student Supplement in Darius, a club I started in my school two years ago. I collect missions and ensure quality and violence in our Darius for education and youth empowerment. So far, I've already been on four service trips on Darius to directly build schools in over four different villages. My most recent goals, I was able to convince and break down 26 classrooms from over five different high schools from our area alone. I've already helped fundraise $10,000 for an entire orphanage last year to give more than 25 kids a place for family to call home. Today, I plan on raising $25,000 in order to build an entire school. We are already more than halfway there, and I intend to keep on tiresing fundraisers for these kids, because these kids, just like us, at the Indiana Local Record have an education. Whether people do anything better or not, I will endlessly fight until every single child in Darius is able to go to school at an entrance lady, the site of poverty in Indiana. So, in addition to this school, I will begin 1,000 kids in Darius in education in the fall of this season. It's time to follow this path. It's time for individuals such as myself to step up and improve others. I want to end my video with a favorite quote of mine, which is always in my journal. It says, "Never doubt the small group, the small community systems change the world." Indeed, it's only thing that ever has.
I love how the Student Guard took off, you guys reached out. From Howe, I have Rachel O'Brien.
Hello, my name is Rachel O'Brien, and I'm help our schools 2016 Care Award recipient. Here at Howe, I'm involved in many things such as the state government, the National Honor Society, Peer Leadership Program, the Chivalry Committee, book clubs, chorus, math league, and then outside of these wars, I'm involved in a lot of other volunteer programs. I am a volunteer at Life Fairly Children's. Here, we work to make kids feel their reality. We dress as princesses and attend many different parties at hospitals and even relay for less. I am also personally bracing over $4,000 for the Spirit of Children's Foundation. The Spirit of Children works to make hospitals less scary for kids and their families. Every year, we throw a Halloween party for kids at the hospital, mine being Robert H. Johnson. All the excess money is donated towards new technology for the hospital this year. We work with artists for change. For the last three years, we have tied a chilly cloak off and produced this money and awareness for equal rights through songs and poetry.
Who doesn't have Let It Go in their head right now? But now, the Student Guard said he could not be here today to entertain a state with a family illness, but we can show his video just so you see what he accomplished.
Yeah, that's good.
My name is Emily Bryson, and I'm a senior at Margot Grace School. I would like to thank the guidance department and Mr. Sutner for nominating me for this award. At the age of 14, I was diagnosed with papillary carcinoma thyroid cancer. As a freshman, I came in contact with the Ashen Horn Foundation, a local foundation in Colts Neck that raises money for better funding and financial aid for deserving families affected by cancer. My charity, the Ashen Horn Foundation Club and Margot Grace School, help raise money and spread awareness for the foundation. Over the past four years, I have devoted my time to running and maintaining the club, raising over $12,000 through dances, car launches, faculty and student fundraisers, paid sales, and national events. The club also focuses on volunteering and coming in direct contact with the children and adults who have the foundation's efforts. There is no further feeling than directly impacting the life of the child. The Ashen Horn Foundation has awarded me with the volunteer service award and the certificate of appreciation twice. Another thing I have done with the foundation is that I have been interviewed on 103.5 WETU and 94.3 The Point to spread my story and inspire others. I am also actively involved in sources of change of Colts Neck Arrow High School, which helps prevent pollution to sustain to consider suicide and help spread suicide forever. One last time, I would like to thank Margot High School and Richard Sutner for giving me this opportunity and now giving me for the 2016 Monmouth County Care Award. Thank you.
You know, I think that sometimes we spend an awful lot of time going through executive session of Board Policy and other issues that aren't really doing what some of our students are really doing out there in our schools. And the six young folks that we highlighted tonight have really taken the approach to do something about the world about it, to act about the world, not be acted upon. And I think that's a really powerful lessons we've already learned so young in life. So, I wish all six of you the best. You had an awesome representation of the world, which I appreciate. Thank you. You don't have to say it in the budget presentation.
I know, Mr. Boyce will begin the budget presentation momentarily, and he'll certainly speak to the process, but I think that there's an inordinate amount of work that goes on behind the scenes to make sure that our financial house is not just in order, but is really embracing the future and planning for the future and understanding and anticipating and making smart decisions now that are really complex and complicated in so many ways. And Mr. Boyce does a phenomenal job of that. He has a terrific staff. But one of the things he does every year that drives me crazy is he reinvents his budget presentation in really powerful ways to deliver, and his goal is always to deliver the sort of financial message of the district in breakdown complex phenomena in a really meaningful way. So, I applaud him because he spends hours upon hours sort of putting this together to make sure that we are succinct and honest and open about our school budget here. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Here is what I want to convey to you tonight. The 2016-17 budget provides for the force set out by our community plan. This budget does so within the 2% cap of property taxes. But tonight's conversation is as much about the year's end as it is about next year. There is a lot of change and a high degree of uncertainty for all districts, not just Field Borough or regional. And we are in a good position to navigate through that with the way that we are currently built. So, that's really the thrust of our conversation today is where does next year fit in with the larger picture? So, before we go through the three stages of tonight's presentation, let me just give you some of the vitals of the district for those of you who are not entirely familiar with the scope and scale of the regional. Some 200,000-plus residents live in 200 square mile footprints that overlays eight communities. Those eight communities are serviced by seven P and E districts, which feed into our six high schools. The overall operation, annual budget operation is in the neighborhood of $200 million. We have more than 11,000 high school students. We have a very comprehensive program that we're very proud of, and the accomplishments of our students and our staff, we only have just a small taste of it tonight with what some of these kids are doing, which is beyond the classroom, is beyond the call that we're curriculum. And if you were to get a moment to spend some time on our website, there are pages and pages of these types of accomplishments of our students and our staff. Also, there are periodic celebrations of their work, which we had our last board meeting, where we just for hours recognized kids and some of the really fantastic things that they do. But for tonight, let's look at structurally how a school budget works. Now, school budgets are not that complicated. They are revenue-driven, just like your home. Okay, so, revenue is really the focus of when we look at forecasting projections and some white stuff that takes our course of action. Revenue is our initial focus, and there really are only three significant items of revenue. Property tax. The law associated with property taxes, that there is a 2% cap on the tax levy. This has been in effect for six years now, and the district has made the decisions each year that we felt were right for the organization at the beginning. This year, we have 2% increase on the tax levy. The law also allows for exceeding that cap in certain situations, which we are eligible for another close to a million of additional. One of the other features of the law is it allows districts to bank and have eligibility for a given year to be considered for use in the two subsequent years. The additional eligible tax levy that we have for this year, this budget is banking that rather than letting that, but it will be certainly something that will be over the consideration in each of the next two budgets that we do. Stating. There's also a law that governs and regulates stating. So, I want to just give you a very high-level review of the two components, the two main components of the SFRA, the School Funding Reform Act. This is in 2008, it was implemented. And it's a very straightforward and logical and rational process for determining what school districts get in terms of stating. The first order of business was to develop a cost model for student characteristics, what are the costs associated with the student. A lot of work was done by focus groups and researchers to come up with a cost model that was going to be applied to all districts. So, that very singular cost model, each district's demographic profile, student profile is applied to it. And then, what from that is generated, a single number called the adequacy budget. The adequacy budget is unique to each district. Although it's the same cost model used, the district profiles vary from district to district. So, each district has a unique adequacy budget, which represents the amount of money that is necessary to provide thorough and efficient education. There are caveats and nuances and a lot of other little layers to that, but that's the gist of it. The second part of the SFRA is, okay, how are we gonna pay for it? We have the adequacy number for each district. What goes first, how do you go about paying for it? So, the formula calls for the local community to pay what the state determines it is able to pay. That's called the local fair share. And then, they'll look at the wealth indicators of each particular community, they'll look at property value, they'll look at income. And from that, from a formula that derives, here's what the local community can afford. Whatever is remaining to be funded from adequacy, less the local fair share, is stating one particular category of equalization. And that's it, and that's a fairly straightforward process. Now, over the years, and this is typical of the funding formulas that have been in place in New Jersey throughout the decades, the state has not been able to fully fund it or has modified it along the lines. The thing that's important to talk about tonight, for you to understand tonight, is that the state is considering a different methodology for allocating the same pot of money, it's a distribution issue, of the same pot of money. And it's over some of the finer points in this funding formula, that the details of that are not yet available, something that we will certainly keep a close eye on and spend some time with when it is available, and we will make our voices heard on behalf of the district and the community. The third significant piece of revenue, and this is structurally, this is across the board in all school districts, is fund balance. So, fund balance also has law associated with it. Districts are not allowed to retain any more than 2%, different 2% by the way, than the property tax, but no more than 2% of their general fund budget hold it aside in fund balance, also known as surplus. Surplus comes from, the fund balance comes from, at the end of any given year, the entire budget Surplus comes from, fund balance comes from, at the end of any given year, the entire budget is not spent, and whatever is left over lapses into fund balance. Now, there are really two things that happen to that money. Primarily, it is then used as an item of revenue in the next budget that is built by the district, as represented here for the budget that I've discussed building now. The other option is to set it aside in what are called facility reserves, and there's a couple different things, but they are set aside pots of money to handle big-ticket facility-related issues. So with all three of these things coming together, and by the way, state aid has been flat for the last several years. These three things coming together have taken hold across the state, and we see this in many school districts, in that the amount of money available in any given annual operating budget, there are some things that districts were, that used to be able to accommodate, and those budgets no longer are able to. For example, big-ticket facility items like replacing a large section of a roof or a boiler in this school, things of that nature. When I arrived here some eight, nine years ago, my predecessor had put in place a process that did indeed carve out a nice solid level of financial effort in each annual budget to address those big-ticket facility items that were coming due in staggered way. Very well done, and I continued that for many years. But in recent years, and starting with a significant cut in revenue, state aid in 2010, most districts, including freehold regional, have not been able to accommodate that kind of appropriation within their annual operating budget. So what does that mean? That source of funding for those types of projects, the source of an annual budget is no longer viable. The next source for that is your facility-related reserves, but with less and less lapsing in any given year. And that money primarily being used in subsequent years to fund those future budgets, facility reserves have been depleted. And we've done some great work with our facility reserves. We've been able to do, contribute to the HP, a large-scale HPC project, we've been able to do roof projects, we've been able to do trap projects. So we expect that money wisely, but it is not being replenished because of the overall structure of an annual budget, and that's really a result of these three things coming together. So the revenue texture has its set of challenges and uncertainties, and that's something that's part of the work ahead for us in the year to come. On the appropriation side, you can see here that there's really only two categories at the highest level, there's really only two categories: direct instruction and everything else. So the core purpose of the organization is direct instruction. So that's what you would imagine it to be, teachers, textbooks, that's direct instruction being delivered to students. The everything else, which you can see in the smaller circle, is all of those things that need to happen in order to optimize that direct instruction in the pleasure, whether that's the facility to be safe, comfortable, or the bus to bring the students to school. It is everything from, the support functions are the development of curriculum and professional development staff, it is the guidance department, the nurse, the attendance officer, all of those things that are meant to clear away the obstacles that teenagers, our students, encounter on their way to their education. Also, is it administrative at both the school level and at the district level and facilities. And you can see that the capital component of the budget has been reduced to negligible, and that is some equipment that the administrators who are responsible for their various areas have allocated for resources that they have available, but really, there are no large big-ticket items that we're able to do within that current piece of the budget. So the expansion of, here are some of the other stressors on all school districts. There's a sort of an ever-expanding scope of services, individual student requirements that school districts must accommodate. There are mandates that land across the board on school districts that take resources, whether it's money or the time of the staff, which is as much a resource as dollars are. And those things that all school districts need to accommodate, but there are additional stressors on what has become an increasingly limited pot of money. So on the appropriation side, it's important in this district, the educational staff in this district, I'm the finance guy in account, not an educator, but I can tell you my educator colleagues are very deliberate, very precise, and thoughtful about what they spend, if the dollars that they do have available to them are. And a lot of that is embodied in the strategic plan, which is currently in its fourth year, and it's really become the culture of the district. And it's one of the things that I think that positions us well to enter into sort of this emerging landscape of public education in New Jersey. We have good people, we have a very deliberate and thorough hiring process to make sure that we only hire good people. Our roadmap, if you build a strategic plan, forces us to do our due diligence and only put forward those things that have the highest return on investment. There's also a component of that that's strategically abandoned. So that constant debate of how to best deploy those dollars, that is in a perpetual process in this district. So I think that the culture of the people that we have here, who are frankly uncomfortable with complacency, these are folks that need to continue to look for, it's consistent with the culture of our community. In fact, Standard and Poor's recently upgraded our credit rating, our bond rating, from AA to AA+. And of the things that they cited, one of them was the strength of the community. It was earning potential, property value, proximity, you know, the value they put forth in education, and all of those things were indicative of a strong community and therefore a strong school district. They also cited our healthy reserves and fund balance, surprisingly, which we are moving away from, along with every other school district in the state. And it's just really a byproduct of those laws that have been put in place for certain reasons. And finally, on our low debt burden. We have only one bond issue outstanding, and it has five more years left on it. So our low debt burden also contributed to Standard and Poor's increasing our credit rating. So the culture of this district, the community, and the capacity of our folks are all important parts of what the future will look like. The weaknesses in a SWOT analysis, weaknesses are primarily financial, as I was saying. The things that we've talked about in the area of revenue and, you know, the evolution and the trajectory of the major revenue components are certainly legislatively cause for concern in just how we manage that very judiciously internally. Opportunities and threats from the outside coming in, I think that, again, one of our most important opportunities is the initiation of the second five-year strategic plan, which year five, that's year first year, is the planning and development of the following strategic plan, and that's going to continue to push us in the direction of return on investment, understanding the context, the economic context that we're in, and really putting those dollars towards those things that provide us the greatest return. One of the other items that I wanted to forward in this presentation was the potential for a small-scale referendum. And I think that we're going to start seeing school districts go to referendum, which is the third mechanism to finance big-ticket facility items. So it's not on the scale of building an entire school or addition, that type of thing, but those roof section replacements and other, you know, significant costs of system upgrades are going to need to be done through small-scale referendums, which go to the community through vote. Our low debt burden allows us, positions us well to do that. So that's not something that's being put forward tonight, but looking at the lay of the land, it definitely is something that we need to consider. Our threats are mostly, we've touched on them along the way, and it is, you know, the legislative, the economic, those are two that this, all of this community is very well aware of, the impact of an economic downturn, as we're coming out of one, but that has some hidden impact on what our community can afford to pay, and then therefore what kind of programs we can offer. I mentioned earlier that the 2% cap on the property tax levy has been in effect for six years, and the district has made decisions along the way to not access those dollars when they were eligible, or access a portion of them. All in all, the compounded effect of tax levy not taking over those six years is more than $20 million. So the district is very aware of all of the stakeholders, all of their interests, and we work within what we try and match up the community's expectations for quality and the economic impact of having a school district of that quality. So the next steps, really the actionable part of the budget development and the district's economic plans for the future, really lie in the strategic plan, and that is within an economic context, and continue the work that's been underway here for four years will continue. I'm certain legislatively, be very aware of the goals on there, and I think with the most recent discussion of legislation, there's going to be something that's going to be out and about soon, and we'll certainly, you know, exercise our influence and give our input to that along the way. We don't know what it's going to look like, we'll reserve judgment until we get to the details. And then the referendum, as I mentioned before, is something that we also need to consider, just structurally, how we design budget and what we intend reasonably expect to have by way of resources. Now, the politicking on a school budget is the one and only time that the community can discuss a school budget. This will be available on the web, and there's also a handout with more detailed data available here tonight, and that'll also be on the web. But I would encourage members of the community to feel free to follow up with questions, to ask those questions. I genuinely feel that the more the community knows the better off the district is. I think that programmatically, folks here doing the housing and the jobs, and I think that financially, the board makes decisions that after considering all possible alternatives, make decisions that are really best for the community as a whole, inclusive of the district. So I would encourage you to reach out along the way with any questions that you have. So I thank you for your attention. I'll go to the board first with any questions, and then to the community, if they have any. Mr. Roses?
I'm very happy with you, Sean.
All right. Members of the community, listen, like I said, I encourage you to reach out to me. There's more additional information, budget information available on the state website and on our website as well. Metrics as far as financial performance, comparative data, we've prepared very well as part of the handout. The academic metrics are also available on the state website and on our website in terms of the needs and the movements of accomplishments of the students and the staff here, so there's lots of good stuff to look at. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Always excellent presentation, and I would echo Sean's words to just take a look at the presentation on the website, because I think some of that comparative data that Mr. Boyce has compiled is really powerful. You know, just looking at it, there's 31 regional high school districts in the state of New Jersey, and I think we're literally in the top five in every possible category in terms of spend. So just excellent. Couple, a couple of points that Mr. Boyce brought up that are really important for us to monitor: changes to the school funding formula, you know, really advocating at the state level that as long as we perpetuate a system that creates winners and losers, we're going to have some real disparities across the state, and that any new funding formula does not have to follow that path. That's a difficult path, and I think that sometimes well-intentioned folks get behind legislation that may not take into account all of the complexities of a school district budgeting process, and that can be dangerous for a number of folks. And the struggles that every school district will face in the coming years over infrastructure needs, capital projects, it used to be not too long ago that the state would tell you, I think it was, what was it, 8%? It was 8, anything less than 8% in your cap reserve was dangerous? What was the?
Well, the surplus, and it's an interesting point, one of the, one of the 2% that I mentioned was a cap on the amount of surplus a district can maintain. That changed actually with Governor McGreevy. Prior to it, it was you could have no more than 6%. And there was also a floor of 3%. Districts were not allowed to go below the floor of 3% because that would be irresponsible. And now, the cap went from 6% to 2%. And, you know, there's political influence and sort of the timing of that and the election season, there's different components to it, but that's what we're left with is no more than 2%.
So it's, you know, there'd be some uncharted waters to navigate in the coming years, and Sean has always been phenomenal at looking outward multiple years, not just a year-to-year budget, and I think that's why our financial house is in the order that it is. So, thank you.
When I see your closing time, I ask you a question, I'm not sure.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
First, I've been here.
Okay.
I was just curious about one thing. I had this, the school budget sheet, and four of the towns, of course, their tax levies coming down, the forest going up.
Correct.
And what I'm curious about, I live in a township, my son lives in a borough, and it seems to be a big disparity here, 7.8% increase for borough. I don't get it. What determines?
That's a great, it's a.
It's one dollar still up and one still down.
It's a great question, and it's a question that we get periodically. So the way the regional tax levy is allocated among the eight municipalities is by consideration of two factors: property value, equalized value, which is fair market value, and enrollment. And even further, enrollment split between elementary and high school students. And the changes in those variables shift percentage share, and by percentage share, I mean percentage of a particular municipality's portion of the overall regional levy, it shifts them. And in some cases, it's very volatile. For English Town and Farmingdale, for example, changes of four or five kids can throw their tax levy into, you know, can really throw it back and forth. But the larger towns have some more stability. So in township, you know, if you look at some of the historical data, last year, there was a significant decline in the freehold regional tax for freehold township. Now, this year, there's an increase. In Borough, there had been four solid years of reductions in their tax levy. And so here's what's happening, and I'll use Borough as an example. The increases in enrollment at the elementary level have not made it to the high school level for Borough. So in essence, because their enrollment was on the elementary side, they, that less of their property value was considered for the regional levy. I know this is difficult to follow along, and actually, there is a presentation that I did last year at this time on this, but, so. But, so it's not only what happens in your town, it's what happens in your town versus what's going on in the other town. So relatively, how are you impacted? But those are the things. Overall, enrollment district-wide has gone down a percent, between a percent and a percent and a half for the last three years. We expect that trend to continue for the years to come, and that's going to mean different things for different communities, depending on where their student bodies happen to be. I'd be happy to spend more time with you on that, and I think if I actually had something to show you, which I do, I'd be happy to do that.
That's fine. You gave me a little, a flavor of it.
A flavor of it, okay, good.
Just one final item from my neck of the woods. So just the past week, we've been fully, more than the past week, immersed in park testing across the district. So we, from a high school standpoint, where the, you know, the park assessments, many students have, have met graduation requirements through other assessments, many have not, but across the district, we stand somewhere close to 3,000 refusals at this point in time, which will put the second year for us where the student data will be really difficult to discern any patterns or understandings of in a real meaningful manner for us to make any, any sort of academic decisions based on those assessments. We did have the, it was covered in the newspapers, the one day where there was a glitch with Pearson's platform. Three of our high schools were still able to test on that day, three were not, which resulted in rescheduling. We've really, we've debated this back and forth over the past couple of years about what's the most effective way to move through the testing and minimize as much as possible the impact to the day-to-day instruction. We've, we've held off from going half-day route where students would come in and just test because due to the volume of the students that we have to test in our high schools, some of our high schools, we'd have to run anywhere between five to nine half-days, and I think, you know, somewhere close to two weeks of just half-days of testing are the exact antithesis of what we should be about. So we've, we've stayed off of that, and we've tried to embed our testing schedule within our instructional day. And that's a really complex endeavor that plays out very, very differently in each of the six high schools, and it's, it's an awful lot of work to pull it off in the best way possible. But at this point in time, we don't, we don't, we don't see moving to any sort of half-day testing schedule. I've also sort of requested as much as possible data on how well students are performing relative to what devices they're taking the assessment on. So is there any difference between a student who takes the assessment on a Chromebook versus an iPad versus a desktop? As we align our technology purchases and as we refresh what we have in our district as a natural order of what we do, having that data and having an understanding that there might be certain tools that enable students to perform better, or other tools that might impact the student's performance, I think is really important data for us to have as district leaders in order to make the best decisions for our students. So all unfolding, but other, other than the, the day where we were down, the days have proceeded relatively smoothly, but that's due to an inordinate amount of work behind the individuals in the buildings making that happen. concludes my update.
Next up, we have public participation. We have two people signed up. First, Mr. Carl from Coltsen.
My name is Carl, I'm from, is this on?
Yep.
From Coltsen. And I first came to the board, oh, I don't know, five years, six years ago, I guess, it started right over here. I came to see a chaotic session of the board meeting, and a woman came up to me and said, "You should run to the board," as I was following up and going to more meetings. So I went home and I said, "Here's paperwork I'm going to put forward," and the Coltsen board members sitting there said to me, "What happens if you went?" And I was just like, "Question," because I didn't think of it. My answer was, "Well, if I went, I'm going to do the right thing. That's what I'm going to do." And I think that my tenure on the board taught me a lot, but I also think that I brought a lot to the board. A lot of changes happened because I was there. So I was interrupted by Charlie when I came in, and I always listen to him, and I was in the process of writing this speech, but I find it worth interesting to quote the Charlie Hurt back there. So I'm going to go through the speech, and don't, don't stop me with my three minutes, Mr. Hesch.
You have what's your name, Mr. Carl?
Thank you for yielding the time. And counsel, please hit the seven-second delay if I step over the ethics line with anything I'm about to say.
Understood.
But I ask that my First Amendment rights are not violated. Now, I'm going somewhere with this, that's why I say this. What are some examples of rights? Well, I think that teaching students to respect rights and citizens and laws fall within the very core of the mission of any public school district within the state of New Jersey. There is a right for each citizen to expect that they are not discriminated against because of race, religious beliefs, sexual preference, and age. Think about the fights of Abraham Lincoln, Harvey Miller, and my own selected choice were the greatest American, Reverend Martin Luther King. We all know that these great Americans were gun-dabbling while they fought for and were successful in getting and winning rights. Yes, rights, what is correct for all of us. At one point in my career, I was the lead federal and ultimately chief of the New York City Housing Authority Police Department, as they fed, as I said, the federal monitoring. This was a department where cops were cops. They had to be. But as to what the head of the major case court told me once, he said, "It is better to let 100 guilty people off than to falsely accuse someone of a crime." Why? Because we must do everything to protect the rights of everybody. I don't think Dr. Martin Luther King would ever offer his support for somebody claiming racial discrimination when in fact it never occurred. When it comes to principles, a school district has to lead by example. And when I came to here, I know that I'm not going to be nominated as a saint when I die by the Pope, that's for sure. But I can tell you this, every decision I ever made when I was sitting in that seat over there was based on my own ethical beliefs as to what was correct in what I did. And I don't think that anybody, well, let me just make this as a general example, I don't want to, I was so distraught years back when so much disgrace was brought to this district. It reminds me of theft of valor when people claim to be veterans and they're not veterans. Well, when people claim to have degrees and they don't have a degree, and then people defend that, that's an outrage in my opinion. It's an absolute outrage, and the fallout from all of that. The kids that this is all for, wonderful children that we saw up here, have a reputation from that school district, which was, which is detrimental when they're applying to colleges. It's a bad situation all the time. But you know, the press looks at things, they look at the way people vote. And I was, Hesch and I, when I first came on board, I suggested that the state controller come in, and Hesch and I took it, and we went to the state controller, and guess what? We were right when it was to the state controller. Well, I would hate to see the press come in and look at things and say, "Why are we going back without following the ethics of people, without setting these principles?" So let's just do the right thing, and I thank you all for your time and for your attention. Thank you.
Mr. Carl?
Um, I'd like to make a comment. So I have a constitutional law exam coming up in a week. I was going to study, but having listened to your speech, I consider myself.
Did I get the amendments right?
You did. Okay, the second speaker is John, is it Cooper?
I passed because you answered my question concerning-
Okay, no problem. That brings us to the agenda, which is- Oh, it's back. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we get to the agenda, the actual budget, adoption of the 2016-2017 annual school budget.
E3.
It's E3.
Motion.
Okay, Jan, second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Discussion? I, I just want to, the only thing I wanted to say about the budget is that sometimes I think the public and even the board sometimes takes things for granted. Sean Boyce does an incredible job. He's very conscientious, and I'm just really happy to have him in our school district. I've seen a little bit of what goes on in other, other districts, and we have a top-notch business administrator, so I just want to thank Sean. Okay, so no other discussion, so we'll take a vote. Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes, all accept.
Just the budgets.
Just the budgets.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Next, we have the agenda, which runs from G1 to K2. And-
Can we, I know it's the entire board, you know, that, you know, it's a mistake about what, it wasn't G1? No, it's, it's generally-
G1, that's A2.
Okay, just, just for quick clarification, okay, the motion on the floor is G1 through K2, and just so everyone knows, our annual appointment, our annual appointments, excuse me, because this is our reappointment meeting, is on G4. Just so there's no confusion, because prior drafts, it was G3, it is G4, unofficial agenda for reappointment of all certificated staff.
Okay. All right, so we're going to take the agenda in one shot. Discussion, or motion?
Motion? Is there a motion?
Second. Do we have a second? Sam?
Pete, Sam.
Pete, Sam. Discussion?
Second.
No discussion yet.
Okay. We have a first and a second, any discussion on the motions?
Okay, seeing none, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes, all except Jennifer Teague's G4, go to Mrs. Don Avangelista.
Mr. Bruno?
I vote yes. I'm going to abstain from Mr. Sean Boylen and Mrs. Jeanette Bruno.
As it relates to G4.
As it relates to G4.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes, on everything except G4 for Donna Avangelista.
Mr. Moses?
Yes, to everything except G4, Donna Avangelista.
All right, give him a moment.
So, okay, so just, again, because, because of the federal court order from the late 1990s, the vote, voting apportionment at the Freehold Regional High School District is weighted. Each individual is, represents a weighted vote, you know, they're all whole persons. For purposes of voting, some votes do count more than others. So in the weighted apportionment vote, all motions pass with the exception of G4 as it relates to Donna Avangelista, which fails because it does not receive the requisite 5.0 vote, which would be needed to carry. So that vote is 3.2 against, 1, 2, 4, 4.9, 2.9, 4, and because we have two members absent, additional 1.9 is not factored in, in favor. So that motion fails.
All else passes.
All else passes. No, it is, it is, so just, just, by statute, in order for any staff to be reappointed, they must receive a majority of the full membership of the board. So it would be as if all nine of us were here, the entire weighted nine. So out of the weighted vote, in order for any individual to be approved, they would have to receive the 5.0 of the weighted vote, which did not happen.
Four point six.
Actually, four point six.
Right, and it received 3.2, it needed 4.6, did not pass.
Mr. Boyce, I have a better chance.
That brings us to new business. Just appointing. Yep. Mr. Sampson has a word?
I know Donna Hind came out tonight to be appointed, so Donna, congratulations, welcome to the Freehold Regional High School District.
And for those of you wondering, Elizabeth, the 22nd, sitting in the chair next to Dr. Nicole Hazel, did not participate in any of the votes. Okay, that brings us to all business. Seeing none, can we have a motion to agenda meeting? So, Sam, second, Pete, all those in favor?
Aye.
So shall you say, so shall it be written. Thank you for coming.